Chair calls the August 6th Stanley County Board of Education meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here. Couple from the media over here, we're glad to have you with us. Not doing baseball tonight, right?
No, sir.
Okay. Chair would like to recognize, Ms. Crump is not with us, she's back here with us by phone, but she's on the road back from the Dixie Youth World Series, or whatever. And so we're gonna have to let Mr. Graves fill in to do the prayer and the leadings for her.
Please bow. Heavenly Father, we just, we open up these, our media tonight, asking for grace and peace and love for all of those who have experienced tragedy in the last week. Help us come together as not only a community here in Stanley County, but also in North Carolina and the United States of America. We ask you, Lord, to give us wisdom tonight as we discuss the important topics facing the school system and help us make the right decision that will impact the students and families of Stanley County, not only this year, but for years to come. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
... of the United States of America and through the call of one nation under God and the gospel of whatever we may trust and serve.
Okay, Chair, I'd like to recognize Ms. Courtney Swain and Ms. Amy Yao, and also Beverly Pennington.
Good evening Chairman Poole and Board members. We are excited to be back before you to give you an update on a program that we brought to your attention. It was about a year and a half ago, so some of you may not have been in those seats at that time. But we were approached by the Butterfly House about a partnership in offering a curriculum to our kindergarten and fifth grade students. And I cannot be more excited to tell you about the success that they have had this year. Amy Yao, who is the Director of the Butterfly House, was gonna be here. She has had a family emergency come up, just as recent as like two hours ago. And Courtney Swain is gonna be presenting to us tonight. And she is the Community Health Educator for the Butterfly House. And she is the person that is in our schools, working with our students throughout the school year. So I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Thank you, Ms. Pennington.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Like Ms. Pennington said, I'm Courtney Swain with the Butterfly House. I'm gonna share a little bit about the Stop Go Tell program that is implemented for first and fifth graders. But first, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what we do at the Butterfly House. We are a child advocacy center, and we see children of possible abuse, neglect, drug endangerment, and witnesses to violent crimes. We support children as they begin their healing process, which is the best part, and we advocate for children. So what in the world is Stop Go Tell? It's a child-based body safety education program for all the students in first and fifth grade. And it's based on five easy-to-remember body safety rules. And then we also, we work with the school counselor at each school to implement the program. And it's very interactive. If you see my friends up here, we've got Freddie and Jasmine, and they come along with me to especially the first grade classrooms. The children actually have a chance to get them dressed and ready to go swimming, so that the children can learn the bathing suit rule. And then also, we learn personal boundaries utilizing football. And it's a little fun, engaging way to get the children excited about learning body safety, and then also puts a tool in their tool belt in the event they might need it. And every first grader earns a superhero cape at the second session of Stop Go Tell. And also, the fifth graders get a bracelet, which you should have in your packets. And the cool part about the bracelet is, on the inside, it says "To Be Brave," because we all know that sometimes to do the right thing, it can be really, really hard. So we always tell the children, they have a "Be Brave" superhero power, it lives in their heart, so that they can use Stop, Go, Tell. But why Stop Go Tell? Unfortunately, the statistics show that we need some prevention. One in seven children experienced child abuse or neglect last year. I know that's an alarming number, and we don't ever wanna think it happens in our schools, in our community, in our churches, on the playground, but it does unfortunately. So with Stop Go Tell, we put a tool in their tool belt, so that they can feel empowered if they need to, so that they can tell someone to stop, go, get away when they can, and tell a trusted adult. So what does the community say about it? A hundred percent of the school counselors surveyed in Stanley County schools felt the program is beneficial to students. A school counselor stated, "It's a very important program, and I think it's important to continue implementing in the future." And a parent took it upon herself to email me one day after her child had just received her superhero cape. And she says that, "My daughter thoroughly enjoyed the discussion and could not stop talking about it. She even slept with the cape." This cape has empowered so many children, to the point it could bring tears to my eyes. But to think that some children, just a simple cape, empowers them so much that they feel they do have a superhero, and that they do know that there's trusted adults. But how has it impacted the students? Students now have a safety plan to Stop Go Tell, and I always tell them, that means if you ever feel uncomfortable, unsafe, someone's hurting your body, or you feel like you're going to hurt your body, it's important to stop, go, and tell a trusted adult. And we talk about what those trusted adults are. Fifth graders, they learn to think twice before they post something on the internet. I even bring an internet safety toolbox, because every cool teacher has one of those. And we show real-life things about why it's so important, it makes connections for them. And as a result of Stop Go Tell, we know for sure there were 11 disclosures from first and fifth grade students during the 2018-2019 school year. So that, just 11 children that we know for sure were able to begin a healing process. And each of you, school board members, have a superhero cape in your packets. And you can put it on, because we always want to make sure that children know that they are surrounded by trusted adults. That without adults like you, adults like you all, we couldn't do the job that we do at the Butterfly House, because it's our job as students, or as adults, to make sure that our students are safe. And remember, North Carolina says, law says that we are all mandated reporters, so if we suspect abuse, it's our job to make sure we report it. So thank you so much for your partnership. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And next year, I'm so excited, the grant that funds Stop Go Tell, all the counselors will get a real superhero cape, not just a kid cape, to be able to have. So it reminds the students that there's trusted adults in their schools.
Chairman Poole, I was just gonna say that I think I got the wrong size.
That's a first grade, first grader, yes.
This is awesome. Very cool.
Thank you.
I would say that probably some of us as adults need to learn to think twice before we post stuff on the internet, as well as, but you know, it rips my heart that we even have to deal with this kind of issues in the world we live in. But it's there, we're bombarded with it every day, sadly. And it's something that should be taught at home, but often at home is where some of it's happening.
Right.
And it's sad that we have to step in, or you had to step in and fill the gap, but we thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Thank you. And you also gotta bookmark, all the kids get those about the body safety rules. And that's a good way that, for some families that don't feel comfortable talking with their children about it, this kinda opens that door of conversation, so they can.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Ms. Crump, you still with us? Hello? Okay, I'll check in with you periodically, make sure you're still with us. Okay. Next item on the agenda, consent agenda, is the approval of minutes from the June 4th, June 18th, and June 20th, the last two being special call meetings. Are there any corrections, deletions, additions to the minutes? Here are none, the minutes will stand approved as presented, and we'll move into committee reports, instructional. Mr. Jeff Chance is not here. Anyone have anything for that?
Chairman Poole, we did have a brief conversation with Mr. Chance at lunch one day. We are working, of course, after we, we also need to bring this to Personnel Committee, so I'm not getting the cart before the horse. We'd like to start back up our night program at the academy. It's not gonna cost us that much. And there's gonna be some data shared with you tonight, and Tim Hatley, I'm not gonna steal his thunder, but a great way to help some of our students that may fall through the cracks. And it's another opportunity for us, if they, if they're placed at the academy for behaviors and we have to put them in after-school reporting, if that doesn't work, then we have another option, is having night school, it'd be 4:30 to 7:30, or 4:00 to 7:30. So we'll be talking with Personnel Committee about that. And again, it's not that expensive to do, and we can shift some staff around that we currently have at the alternative school, just provide some additional opportunities for our students. And when I talk about policies, I'll bring up to speed on some additional things that are probably going to, we're gonna get ahead of the game, because at some point in the near future, I think, with policy changes and discipline, we're gonna have to start doing more to keep kids off the streets and in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Facilities, Mr. Ryan McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have a Facilities Committee meeting this evening. Two items that we discussed. One was, we talked to Dr. James Marshall, just reviewed our facilities use form and the fee structure. So he is gonna get with Todd regarding that, and his volleyball league that he runs called the Stanley Extreme. And also, we discussed a, the use of a building at Norwood Elementary, partnering with Save the Children. And if Todd would come up, kind of just bring you and Ms. Watson up to speed on that, and Ms. Crump. It is the art building behind Norwood. So we're looking at entering a one-year lease agreement.
Good afternoon, or good evening. Like Mr. McIntyre was saying, Save the Children is an organization that has gotten the grant or the lease right now to run the Head Start program in this county. And what they are requesting is to do a partnership with Stanley County Schools, utilizing some of our facilities. And the facility they're wanting to use is the building, if you're familiar with Norwood Elementary School, there's a building behind, detached behind the school. We call it the old art building. Right now, it's just being used for storage, it's not being, you know, there's not any instruction going on in that building. And what they're wanting to do is to hold their Head Start program there this coming school year. It'd be about 40 students. The lease agreement that he is putting toward us, and that's not, I guess, you know, we'll have to obviously run that through lawyers and make sure everything's right. What they're asking is to get into a lease for one year. At the end of that year, they can either decide that it does not work, or we can decide, either party can break the lease, and that's the end of it. But if at the end of that year, if both parties are in agreement that it's working, they then will ask for a four-year lease. So what you'd be approving tonight would be just trying a one-year lease with this organization. Mr. Graves will get into the, some of the details when he talks here in a little bit, I assume, or Mr. McIntyre, I'm not sure who's gonna present it, as far as the fee structure, how we're looking at that. But they will be buying meals from us at the school, they'll be buying breakfast and lunch for the, for their students. Like I said, I did say they're looking at 40, about 40 students this year, that will be coming through their Head Start program. And so, you know, that's the, what he wanted to come to the board to present was an opportunity to go into that agreement for one year, and then see at the end of that year if both parties wanna continue that.
Chair has a question, the chairman of the board has a question.
Do. Are these students just for Norwood, or is it the whole county?
No, it's county-wide. It'll be county-wide students, any student that qualifies, I guess, for the, for the Head Start program in Stanley County. Now, they were wanting to obviously try to use other facilities, but we don't have the space, or the, you know, the room at any other facility. They were wanting to try to get one at the Southern End, and one more in the Western or the city. We, you know, we don't have any way to partner with them in those areas, we just don't have space. But we were able in the Southern End to, you know, locate space that, at the moment, is not being used, to try to partner with them. From what my understanding is, you know, there's a lot of other school systems in the state that do this, they partner with Head Start, because it is students that eventually are gonna come into, into our system. And it's a, it's an opportunity to get a, you know, a little earlier start, and maybe their curriculum and how these students are being, you know, prepared for Stanley County Schools.
You said it's being used for storage now?
Yeah, right now, it's just has stored, just desks, chairs, you know, just stuff that Norwood had.
Are we heating and cooling that area now?
Well, there'll be a little bit, you know, we may have a little bit of cooling, a little bit of heating, just try to prevent, you know, any kind of issues with building climate. But, you know, nothing like, you know, you might have there. What we have in those units, if you're familiar with it, it's barred units, those are the individual, yeah, that's what heat and cools, that particular unit. The fee structure would hopefully cover any, any cost on our part. You know, we wouldn't be not looking to make money, but not looking to lose money in the process, in this partnership.
Is this gonna be conducted during normal school hour?
Yeah, they would start, yeah. Their times would be, they may come, I think, a little later than Norwood opens, and probably leave a little earlier than, than Norwood, you know, ends their day. But it would just, it would be within our timeframe.
They'll have access to bathrooms?
The bat, that's one of the reasons he likes that particular building, it has bathrooms in it. That's a requirement, federal requirement for them, is the classroom has to have a bathroom. And so that's, that's one of the reasons a lot of the other spaces we thought about would not work, because they don't have bathroom facilities, and this space does.
They have their own buses, right?
I don't know how, I'm not sure how they do that, if they bus, or if parents are responsible for bringing them. But we would not be involved in transportation.
They have their own buses. And if not, then they would contract at a rate for us. I mean, we wouldn't take a loss on any of it.
And he's not mentioned anything about transportation, so I'm assuming that's not something they're requesting, he's not mentioned anything about that. He could not be here tonight, I had encouraged him to come. He had a flight out at 7 o'clock. You know, he wanted to be able to be here, he sent me as much information that I shared with the committee. But that's the only reason he's not here tonight, he just had a previous engagement, couldn't be here.
I will say, Mr. Graves is gonna bring a motion that come out of committee. However, we, there are still a few gray areas in this, as far as Todd's gonna research fair market value, get with a Realtor on that. And we're still unsure if Head Start is gonna be responsible for janitorial services, or if they want us to take care of that. But if they want us to take care of that, of course, Todd's gonna figure that into the rate.
So what are you looking for tonight? Just a preliminary agreement?
I guess what we're looking for tonight is to say that you're okay with us proceeding to...
Say you're going to have a lease grown up anyway?
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, a motion was, was made in the committee to recommend to the full board to approve a one-year lease agreement between Save the Children and Stanley County Schools for Norwood Elementary School building, space specifically the old art building, with the option to extend for a, an additional four-year period to be agreed upon between both parties at a rate of fair market value for the facility. And we would add an additional fee to cover janitorial services if those services were required. So that's what motion was passed out of the committee to the full board to take action on tonight.
I don't, I don't wanna speak out of...
More than just preliminary agreement, but whatever.
Yeah, I don't wanna, you know, try to speak out of turn, I'm not 100% familiar with proper rules of orders. But the reason we say fair market value is because we can't, being it's, most of their money's federal money, they're gonna want somebody to say this is a real, you know, so we just can't pick a value. So we'll have to get someone to establish, real estate agent or whatever, what would be the, the fair market value for that building.
All right, that's coming out of committee, no second needed. Does everyone understand the motion? Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, the dates would be, I noticed it, I was between...
I got you. It's, the dates will go from August 12th, 2019, to July 31st, 2020.
Correct, yeah.
No discussion, all those in favor of the motion, signal up, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ryan, answer, Mr. Anthony Graves.
I do have a quick question, and maybe we can refer this to our CFO, if she's gonna make a report. But it's my understanding that the, the audit firm is gonna start their work this month, is that correct? Okay, so just for the benefit of everyone watching, and for our media, we have an independent third-party audit that is, that takes place every year. And I believe every year it starts in August, and then it ends sometime in October or November, it's a multi-month process. So I just wanted to provide that information to everyone, and then beyond that, there's, there's no update, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Personnel, Ms. Vicky Watson.
No report.
Policy, Ms. Crump.
I have that.
Ms. Watson's gonna do that, okay.
All right, you have in your packet, let's see, we met on July 18th, to go over some of our policies that's been recommended through North Carolina State Board of Association, and also the state. And you have in your packet, two pages, well, one page of all, excuse me, of all that. And those are the ones that we're gonna table for 30 days, that people can look over them.
Would you like to read the names of those, just so, I know, I know that's lengthy, but no one can say we didn't give them public notice that these are gonna be operated on.
All right, we have Policy 2000, Policy 210, what do you want me to?
What he refers to.
Over here, okay. All right, Policy 200, I mean 2000, Operational Goals of the Board. 2010 is Board and Superintendent Relations. 2100 is Board Member Legal Status. 2110 is Board Member Elections. 2115, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. 2116, Removal From Office. 2120, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. 2120, Board Members Conflict of Interest. 2122 is Role of Board Members in Handling Complaints. 2123, Board Member Opportunities for Development. 2125, and 7315. Is that together? It'll be in both of those, okay, confidential information, okay. And then 2130, Board Member Compensation Expenses. 2200, Election of Officers, Organization of Board. 2020, Duties of Officers. 2220, Official School Spokesperson. 2230, Board Committees. 2300, Board Meetings. 2302, Remote Participation in Board Meetings. 2310, Public Participation at Board Meetings. 2320, Compliance with Open Meeting Laws. 2321, Closed Sessions. 2325, Board Meetings News Coverage. 2330, Board Member Agenda. 2335, Advanced Delivery of Meeting Materials. 2340, Parliamentary Procedures. Excuse me, 2341, Quotum. 2342, Voting Methods. 2400, Board Policies. 2410, Policy Development. 2420, Adoption of Policies. 2430, Dissemination and Preservation of Policies. 2440, Policy Review and Evaluation. 2450, Suspension of Board Policies. 2460, Administration in Policy Absence. 2470, Administering Procedures. 2475, School Rules. 2500, Hearings Before the Board. 2600, Consultants to the Board. 2610, Board Attorney. 2650, Laissances with School Board Association. And 2670, Business Advisory Council.
Thank you for that, Ms. Watson. Now, a lot of that's about the school board, so anybody that's entertaining thoughts around for school board, go online and read and find out whether you wanna be here or not. But we, we do have a lot of rules that constrain us in the way we operate. But those will be out for 30 days. Anything else?
All right, Mr. Chairman, we need to, these are the policies for, we need to rescind, these are the old policies, and so we need, need to rescind these. 1010, Official Name. 2020, Parental Involvement. 3010, Mission Statement. 3065, Teaching Methods. 3120, Parent Teacher Conference. 3560, Title One Parent Involvement and Family Engagement. 4090, Including 4090E, Student Grievance Attachments with Grievance Complaints Form. 5010, Protection Against Sex Discrimination Title Nine. 5055, Sexual Harassments. And 5195, Including 5195A, Grievance Procedures for Employees and Attachment with Grievance Complaint, Complaint Form. And 5198, Prohibition, I guess, Retaliation. We need to rescind those because they are in this new, in these new policies.
I guess the Chair would, would have a question here. If these have been superseded, aren't they already gone? I mean, why do we need to rescind if they're superseded?
You still have to rescind them legally, to take them out of existence, because we have two policies, and you have to rescind the old one. Just guidance from the School Board Association.
I thought that's what, when we made a new policy, or added to a policy, that automatically took the other one out of existence?
They're saying not, they say we have to publicly rescind them.
Man, this is new, 20 years doing this, this is the first time for this, okay.
May, Mr. Chairman, there are, are some number changes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, they're all number changes, though.
Yes.
All right, the, the motion from committee is to rescind these, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any, everybody understand the motion? Any discussion? Here are none, those in favor, signal up, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Clear with us, ma'am, we'll see if we can get Ms. Crump back up. Do you have anything, Dr. James, from Legislative and Resource Network?
Other than the fact that state doesn't have their budget in place yet?
Yeah, that was the first thing. State budget, House Bill 966, of course, has not been voted on. There is a stopgap measure. The only issue with House Bill 961, it does not fund ADM growth. So if your district, you know, has an additional 200 or 300 students, they'll not be funded until we get a new budget in place. But there's several that were interesting. And as we spoke earlier about policies, of course, and this continues to be a trend with the federal government weighing in on disparity and discipline, but Senate Bill 295, Standards of Student Conduct, and I just highlighted a couple things. It requires all LEAs to review current federal guidance from the US Department of Ed before adopting any student conduct policies. It also requires us as an LEA to annually submit a copy of our most up-to-date student discipline policies by September 1st. There used to be examples inside the policy that showed what a serious violation was. We have to remove that. That could be a conversation in itself. We have to remove that. Um, that could be a conversation in itself. Allows LEAs to require that students and parents sign an acknowledgement that they have a copy of the student policies and procedures, and I believe those are currently, um, going to be posted on our website. So we'll have to have a conversation about how to get parents sign off. Probably at open houses, we'll have to set that up to make sure that parents have viewed those policies. Uh, it's quite lengthy. So I'm not sure that we can, uh, well, I know we can't print and hand one to every parent, but electronic, uh, measures do suffice for the law. Uh, this new bill will go into effect in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. So there's were, uh, some interesting policies there. Of course, there is a new Senate Bill, six eighty-one, inside that bill, uh, buried down in it. Uh, the House Rules Committee has added that, uh, we may now ask for an additional quarter cent sales tax or use rate tax. And that will be levied after October first of twenty twenty. So normally, counties could just ask for a quarter cent. So now there'll be an additional quarter cent for a half cent. So that was signed into law. Um, a good bill, I feel, and I'm sure all the educators would, um, is Senate Bill three sixty-six, ninth and tenth grade CCP courses. So it's opening up some additional college and career transfer pathways to our freshmen and sophomores that were not able to take, um, courses below the eleventh grade. There were a few courses that Career Technical did allow, but, uh, it's, it's letting us offer additional courses starting as a freshman. That should help us get some students through, uh, completers and also credentialing. So those were just a few changes. Quite a few bills are still lying on the governor's desk. And, uh, as he signs those, I'll keep the board apprised of them. So, that was it.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
About the quarter cent sales. So explain that again, about the quarter cent sales tax.
So currently, the, the law was designed that we could, counties could ask for a quarter cent sales tax, a use tax. So the Senate Bill that's, um, now put through and approved is going to allow us to ask actually for a half cent. So an additional quarter cent. So basically, the counties that have a quarter cent in place now have the ability to go on the ballot and ask for an additional quarter cent. So for this county, that would be somewhere around a million and a half dollars, additional dollars of revenue.
Okay, thank you, Dr. James. Uh, Mr. Danny Poplin, curriculum instruction, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, Mr. Tim Havel is going to review the strategic plan at this time during the highlights that we have today with, uh, five different areas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, we started out this school year last week with our three-day administrative retreat, with our district and school leadership meeting. And the first four hours, that's what we did. We divided up into five groups and basically reflected on our strategic plans, strategic goals. Uh, basically what we did right, what we did wrong, moving forward. And there were a lot of positives. Uh, typically, when you see me, I have lots of charts, lots of hard and fast data numbers. We don't have that quite yet tonight because, uh, all of our seven, or excuse me, eighteen, nineteen testing data per se proficiency has not been approved by the state. Uh, hopefully, that will go before the State Board of Education at their September meeting. So hopefully, soon thereafter, you'll see me again with my charts and everything. But tonight, I just want to look at, and I'm, there's a few numbers and charts in here, but these are unofficial. These are using preliminary numbers. So I'm still giving that disclaimer up front because I will not be quoting a lot of exact numbers because they're unofficial. So... But that's the reason I'm calling it a quick glimpse of eighteen, nineteen school year. And the first goal is to prepare future-ready students. And, and looking back at the, um, and I apologize, I said seventeen, eighteen, but the eighteen, nineteen school year, academic proficiency indicators that increased were our EOG, ELA reading grades four and five. Our reading grades six and eight. Our science grades five and eight. Our EOC biology in high school, which has been a concern of ours for several years. So we was ecstatic to see, uh, improvements and increases there. Our math course rigor, and what that is, just a, a, a quick, um, reminder, is that at least we want as many of our graduates to have passed Math Three. So that's what that measure is. And last but not least, we saw increases in our four-year cohort, uh, graduation rate. And personally, you know, I think that cohort graduation rate, that's the reason we're here. The, should be the main objective of the school system is to prepare our graduates, uh, to go out into the community and be successful. And if you'll look at, uh, these graphs, I prepared two here. The first one is the county graduation rate. And again, I won't, um, mention specific numbers. But if you look back at that trend from two thousand thirteen, fourteen to eighteen, nineteen, other than a little dip along the way, it's definitely increasing. And we're definitely in the nineties. And, um, cohort graduation rate in my line of work gets to be a dirty business in June and July because districts actually kind of, uh, we fuss over graduates. Uh, we try to claim all the students that we've been a part of, and we'll claim of our graduates, and those that dropped out, we try to pull them off on somebody else. But, um, actually, in that process, at one point, our preliminary numbers were a little bit higher than this. But we did have a couple graduates that, uh, our appeals to the state were rejected. So, but we're still the highest we've ever had on our graduation rate. So we're excited about that. We're in the nineties. And in my line of work, anytime you can say you're at least ninety percent, that's something to celebrate. The graph on the bottom right-hand corner, that's our four traditional high schools. Again, you'll see a positive track over the last six years. Um, we definitely want those stair steps increasing to the right. Um, most of those, that green line reflecting the eighteen, nineteen school year, uh, is the highest they've ever had. So again, most definitely, that was one of our major accomplishments, looking back at eighteen, nineteen school year. Then, uh, breaking down some of, uh, I've already mentioned biology had been a concern over the last couple of years. And looking at this graph, you see why. Because you go back to thirteen, fourteen, we had several bad years. I'll be very blunt and honest. But if you look at seventeen, eighteen, and then eighteen, nineteen, hopefully, we've corrected the ship. We're headed in the right direction. And, you know, we all, like, again, we want that arrow going pointed up to the upper right-hand corner. Grade five science and grade eight science, again, that grade five science, you always have the dips and, um, heels there, but, um, basically, since thirteen, fourteen, has trended up. Grade eight science, uh, again, was a concern there for a couple of years because we took a pretty severe drop. But we had just as much increase from seventeen, eighteen to eighteen, nineteen. So hopefully, we've corrected that. We've got some curriculum things in place. Um, so we're really happy about our science indicators. That's fifth, eighth grade EOG science, and then our biology. And, uh, the curriculum folks, uh, I'm, I'm not a curriculum expert, but they have several other things in place for next year to continue, hopefully, without success in the science field. And EOG, um, fourth grade, I put that on there, and a lot of people say, why did you put that on there? Fourth grade reading has traditionally been a weakness for us. We've struggled, uh, with fourth grade. Uh, there's lots of different scenarios, arguments, while people could offer why that is. Uh, but the good thing there, hopefully, there, again, we figured it out, um, without s- mentioning specific numbers. Hopefully, our number's going to come back, some of our highest fourth-grade reading scores that we've had in the last six years. So we're, we're really happy about that. And there, again, um, again, looking at the data piece, um, from my perspective, one of our issues in Stanley County is that we have those peaks and valleys. Uh, we go up, and then we go down. I think I've heard Mr. Poplin mention before, you know, it's like we're trying to juggle plates. We get these going real good, and when we turn to grab this other one, these fall. And that's one thing we want to hopefully correct. And if we can gather together several years of consecutive growth, that's what we all want. So hopefully, that's the reason we included fourth grade there to show that upper trend. And then just a couple of schools. We wanted to highlight a couple of schools. Uh, the first graph there is Baden Elementary. And ideally, this is what we want every one of our proficiency graphs to look like. Uh, you go back to thirteen, fourteen, they started out at seventy-five percent proficient in EOG science and have pretty much steadily increased ever since. And there, again, you'll notice without mentioning specific numbers, they're in the nineties. That makes us happy. And like I said, if, if, if I could have my dream charts, I'd have a, a PowerPoint full of these. Then, um, to the right of that, you see Indy Elementary. And if you'll remember, Indy was one of our D schools seventeen, eighteen. And I'm going to mention them again here in a second, but we put them on there to show that they have worked really hard to correct some of their issues and that they've strung together, they're getting two consecutive years in their fifth grade science. And going to, in a year or two, we'll be up there giving Baden a run for their money. Bottom left-hand corner, we have grade five science from Millingport. Again, unfortunately, seventeen, eighteen school year, they were a D school. But you'll see there, they had tremendous gains in science. And it wasn't just science. I just picked a couple of graphs to represent tonight. But again, they are above eighty percent, headed hopefully towards the nineties. And if they continue with what they've done this past year, uh, Millingport should be good. And then, to the right of that, we have Locust Elementary. Uh, and that's a collective three, fourth, and fifth grade reading. Um, and that's kind of what I mentioned earlier about the up and down. You'll notice there, thirteen, fourteen, dropped a little bit, fourteen, fifteen, up fifteen, sixteen, down sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, but then made a tremendous jump here in eighteen, nineteen. Um, again, I won't get into the reasons why we think that happened, but hopefully, Mr. Grace and our curriculum folks can continue that. And anytime you see a jump, um, of ten percentage points like that, again, that makes us really happy. And if they can replicate, that'll replicate half of that moving into next year, um, we'll be, um, real excited. As I've mentioned, seventeen, eighteen, we did have six schools that had that school performance grades of D. Uh, without getting into a lot of details, um, at this point, we have limited data. Uh, you've seen me mention reading and science. That's because our math scores are not available yet. This, uh, eighteen, nineteen was a renorming of a new math test. Uh, that procedure's being completed right now, and that will go before the State Board in September. And we have no idea what our math scores are until then. So everything, uh, our magic leaves at this point is basically solely based on reading and science. But if you look at those six schools, and we look at just the science and the reading, if you look, um, at Indy and South Stanley Middle School, they have five indicators so far that we have the numbers for. They have third, fourth, fifth grade reading for elementaries, and then they have a combination of third through fifth, and then fifth grade science. The middle schools have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade reading, and then a combination of all three of those grade levels at ninth grade science. So out of five indicators, Indy and South Stanley Middle School had double-digit increases in three of those subject areas from the previous year. That's double-digit increases in percentage, correct, proficient. So that's huge. And Millingport has pulled out four of those out of five indicators with double-digit increases. So needless to say, we don't know what the math's going to come back. But if the, even if the math would be the exact same as last year, that in itself would put them enough into, push them well into the C category away from the D. So we're kind of celebrating, even though it's not official yet, uh, but the tea leaves look good at this point. Before we move into the second goal, um, before we leave curriculum, one other thing that we've done different this year, and I don't have a slide on that, is our credit, uh, credit recovery program. In the past, we've had several different ways we've attempted, uh, to provide that for students. But, um, this summer, curriculum folks put together two different summer sessions, two, two-week sessions, um, over a span of about a month, six weeks. And just to give you a few numbers, eighty-five percent of the students that were enrolled, now, these are students that were trying to get credit for courses that they had failed or because of attendance. And we know sometimes we're talking about attending in the summer. But those that had registered, eighty-five of those did attend. Eighty-five percent of those students did attend. And seventy-one percent of those of students attending did receive remedial credit for their course. So there, again, that's another positive that our curriculum folks have done. And that kind of ties in with that cohort graduation rate. Because if we have those students that fall, sometimes even a course or two behind, it's easy for them to give up. So if we can keep them up with our cohorts, hopefully, that's going to further increase our graduation rates. Goal two of our strategic plan was Twenty-First Century Professionals. And here, again, we have a lot of incomplete data at this point because EVOs, our growth mechanisms, um, that is provided for us by SAS through DPI, will not be released until later this fall. But, um, one little tidbit we did here, have here, was the one-year turnover rate for, again, this is seventeen, eighteen. Turnover rates, according to Ms. Calvert, so always a year behind, so like taxes. But, uh, that's our most current data. But the good news here is our turnover rate is below the state when you look at elementary, middle, and high. And this is where you, the lower the better, because what this means is the percentage is those teachers that was here last year, but gone this year. So we want a low percentage. So if you look at elementary, our turnover rate was twelve-point-two percent, where North Carolina was twelve-point-five. Middle, we had a nine-point-two percent turnover rate with the state being at fourteen-point-five. So evidently, our middle school teachers love what they're doing. Uh, high school, thirteen-point-three compared to thirteen-point-eight for the state. The third goal is healthy and safe students. And, um, what a lot of this reflected on in our strategic goals was transportation efficiency. And looking back, according, um, to Mr. Lambert, these numbers are released in December. So again, we don't have the nineteen numbers. We'll have those this coming December. But if you look December of sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, you've had a little over a ten percentage point increase. Our efficiency started out seventy-nine-point-zero-two, grew to eighty-four-point-four-five, and now to eighty-nine-point-three-five. And not to get involved in the topic of the day, but, uh, with some of the changes that have been proposed for next year, according to what we've been told, that efficiency should have another healthy jump, uh, when reported in this coming December. So again, another positive there. Another part of healthy and safe students is our child nutrition. And we always want as many participating as possible. So for the eighteen, nineteen school year, for lunch, our goal was set at fifty-five percent of our students to participate. We exceeded that with fifty-six-point-three-nine. Our breakfast goal was at twenty-five percent, and we achieved a twenty-nine-point-four-six percent participation. Uh, Ms. Melton does a wonderful job in child nutrition, and she has done a lot to market. I can attest to that personally, because I have donned a tiger suit a time or two and been with her to promote, uh, chicken strips, I think was my day. Um, but she has done a lot to try to boost that participation. The last component of the healthy and safe students is the safety component. Um, during eighteen, nineteen school year, we implemented several different facets, including lobby guard, um, full-time SROs to our middle schools, and the camera system upgrades. And then we're still working on that. We had a report, uh, by Mr. Bowers at the administrative retreat, talking about the safety vestibles and all that, and hopefully, within the next year, so that would be completed as well. That leads us to, uh, goal four, leadership for innovation and collaboration. Our multi-tiered support system, when we refer to it as MTSS, is increasingly being integrated. We have some new personnel joining the team. They're not really joining the team. They're just going to wear a little bit different hat this year to help some of our more challenging schools fully implement that process to help those students in need. Uh, I've already mentioned lobby guard. Uh, but in addition to helping secure our facilities, lobby guard has helped us track our volunteer participation. Uh, seventeen, eighteen, we logged nine thousand and sixty-six hours. Two thousand, eighteen, nineteen, a whopping thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six hours. Again, that probably contributes to some of our success. The more hands in the pot is the better we are, and the more community support, parent parental support is, you know, helps us all. The last of our goals, goal five, the Twenty-First Century Systems, uh, technology equipment. I talked to Mr. Britt, um, last week when I was putting this together. One hundred percent of our active classrooms now have interactive panels. Uh, two hundred and ten of those classrooms was fitted in the seventeen, eighteen school year. Two hundred and forty of those done this past school year, in fact, up until the last couple of weeks. Uh, all teachers will have received new devices. So that's exciting, you know, even though we're grown professionals, we're like little kids. We like to have new toys occasionally. And a Chromebook or laptop or tablet goes a long way. And we continue with our one-to-one program with the purchase of new student devices, being Chromebooks. And again, all of our third through twelfth graders have their Chromebooks, uh, so that technology, no longer, we have to travel to a computer lab, you just pull it out of your desk. Facilities, um, Mr. Bowers might have been the star of our administrative retreat because he got to hand out checks. Um, and my wording is a little confusing here, but back last summer, the previous summer, he challenged the schools to save energy. And if what they could save in their utility bills, that they would give it to them to use- use for instructional purposes. So looking back at that seventeen, eighteen baseline, he did present six schools with checks, I believe they ranged anywhere from four hundred to a thousand dollars, that they had saved in their utilities, that now they have that money in hand to use for instructional reasons. So that definitely woke up some people. I think a couple of the principals may be a little bit more interested into that now. And just to clarify, and this was one thing I questioned when he was passing out, but he's going to use that seventeen, eighteen year as their baseline. So those schools that got a check for this past year, it's not like they have to improve on those savings, they're still competing against that seventeen, eighteen utility use. Now, all that hopefully is good news, not a lot of details because we're kind of limited at this point, but we did want to share what we could. But I'm a firm believer in that you have to talk about the good, you have to talk about the bad and the ugly as well. And so just a few things that you probably will hear us talking about, we've already been working to deal with in the central office and at the school level. Our EOG reading at grades three and seven, like I said, we've worked with fourth before, we finally got them righted, so hopefully we keep them juggling and do the same thing for third and seventh. Our EOC English two is still a little bit of a challenge, but we're trying some new things for that. ACT, that's alarming because here again, legislative update, Dr. James didn't mention, but there's several bills still out there with testing. And one of the proposed bills is that most of our accountability testing would come from the ACT. And preliminarily, looking at last year, our ACT numbers aren't too good, so we want to correct that. We want to correct that no matter what the state's going to measure us on, but especially if they're going to hold us to that being one of our indicators. ACT work keys goes along with that. That's, not every student's tested on the work keys, they have to become a CT completer. But Ms. Mandy Mills, our new CT director, and she's putting together a team, and they're working to increase that. Not only increase how students do, but to increase our number of students that will participate in the work keys. And the state has made some changes as well. And just to look at a couple of grade levels at some specific schools, grade three reading at Stanfield and Norwood, we were a little concerned about, as well as grade five reading at Aquadale. And last but not least, teacher attendance. There again, that's not my ballpark, but it was discussed several different times at the administrative retreat. This time, everything comes down to your pocketbook. And I believe if I remember correctly, Dr. James, our teacher absence is about twice what the state average is. So that means we're spending out about twice what we should. So every dime we can save through paying subs would be more money going to instructional uses and hopefully better some of our scores. So there are a lot more data and information to come. This is just a quick review of our strategic plan and our strategic goals, but I'll answer any questions you may have. Like I said, I can't give specific numbers, but I'll be glad to answer any questions I can.
We will hold our fire till you come back with more definitive.
Very good, I'll wear a thicker jacket that night.
I do have a question, Chairman Poole. And it's about the very last question. First of all, before I ask you this question, thank you for this excellent presentation. This is great. And for those of us that have been out in the schools throughout the year, we were receiving encouraging information from principals and teachers. So for a lot of us, this doesn't come as a surprise, but we're happy to be able to share a lot of this information publicly and can't wait until September when you share more. So thank you very much. But I do have a question about teacher attendance because the school board entered into a contract with a firm to help us with substitute teachers. And one of the reasons why we did this, I believe, was we wanted to help address some of the issues around teacher attendance. Do you know, because I think we were told six months ago that we were twice the state average, are we still at twice the state average, or has that gone down?
We entered, we entered the year at about seven point three percent. And actually, it's one of those situations where you didn't know what you didn't know. So we really had no way of collecting that information or actually individuals that could pull that data. But since we've been with ESS, they've been pulling it, and I actually send the board an update each week with the teacher attendance in it. So now that the principals have that tool, and actually, I sent the actual reports out to the principals and asked for feedback because it needs to be usable by the people that matter on the floor to help them pinpoint where their absentee problems are at. So actually, we've, ESS has been working with us. We'd like to do a wellness plan, and I'll share with the board this week, there's just a recent article that come out nationally, it's about ten pages, that talks about the impact of teacher absenteeism on students and the entire school culture and environment. And we actually brought this up in our retreat. A lot of times, the school culture's not good, the first place you can look is teacher attendance, because teachers don't want to come to work. And here's what it's costing us. We should be spending about, Georgia and I have actually put pen and paper this, about, in reality, about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but we budgeted for the schools about five hundred and twenty-five thousand. And what we've asked principals to do is work with us to come up with an incentive plan for those teachers who are, you know, less than five days' absence. The state average is about ten absences, and one time we were up to twenty. So here's what that costs. We, and I know that we're all, if we could do it today, this board would double the teacher incentive if we had the money. So we're diligently trying to look everywhere we can to save a penny, to put it towards teacher supplements. And this is an area that we're spending about six hundred thousand more dollars than we should be, that we need to work on. And again, there's always life situations and that, you know, we pull out FMLA, short-term disability leaves, so all that's pulled out. We don't, we're not going to hold that against the school, but we've actually empowered our principals by giving them a budget for attendance. And we see if we give you forty thousand, based on, it's based on the number of teachers and an amount per teacher, if we give you forty thousand and you only spend twenty-five, then you are to take part of that and come up with an incentive plan the board can look at and approve, so we can award or reward those teachers that do make it to school every day. And again, we will not hold against any employee, an FMLA situation, or pregnancy, or anything along those lines, we'll pull out, it's not fair. But just our daily attendance, and I think the principals would tell you that the information that ESS provided showed them some trends, like, you know, Joe Blow was out a lot on Fridays, or on Fridays and Mondays. So it started showing them trends. And one thing that I, that I asked the principals to look at, that was a little disturbing, we had a ninety-eight percent fill rate on substitutes, and that's the highest we've ever been. It could be a hundred, but here's the problem, we still have those employees that call in after six o'clock. Our agreement with ESS, they'll call till six o'clock, but after that point, it's the school secretary, and it's really not fair for an employee not to call the principal, which is their supervisor. And so we do have a column in those reports that the board gets and the principals that show you repeat individuals that seem to be on several occasions calling in after the six o'clock time. And I do know that you can wake up and get sick, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't be four or five times a year that you're calling in after six o'clock, because if we could, if we could resolve that, we'd have almost a hundred percent fill rate, which would be the highest we've ever had.
So, so you said that, and last year, before ESS was contracted, we were at around twenty, which was twice the state. What are we at now?
We're seven point three percent. We're down to around thirteen or fourteen absences. Our goal would be ten or less.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
But I forgot to mention, Chairman Poole, we are working on a wellness program diligently with, it's up to ESS who they partner with, but I'm sure they'll look at several different options. But we would love to roll out with their partnership, something with either the Y or someone local, that will actually encourage people to get a price point, so our employees can actually join these organizations, because that's a key part in lowering absenteeism, is wellness.
Personnel Administration Services, Ms. Vicki Calvert.
An updated copy of the personnel agenda was placed at your, at your seat. Section one requires no action, but section two does require action.
Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah, Ms. Calvert, I would just like to ask, are we completely full on our bus drivers?
Actually, the Transportation Department is working on bus drivers. Mr. Lambert shared a spreadsheet with me, and so I can't say we're complete, I don't know if we're completely full, but last I heard, I think all of our full-time positions were filled, and it was just a matter of fine tuning when we need to, like, pair a cafeteria worker with a bus driver.
I think it was two routes that we did not have cover, and that's taken us down to sixty-six drivers, and we struggled just to get sixty-six drivers.
Move approval of section two.
Motion, Mr. McIntyre to approve section two, personnel agenda, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Here none of those in favor, signature of I, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey, do you have some amendments for us?
You have before you amendments four through ten. This is for reconciliation of the two thousand seventeen, I'm sorry, eighteen, nineteen school budget.
Move approval of budget amendment four, state funds.
Motion, Mr. McIntyre to approve budget amendment four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of that one? Here none of those in favor, signature of I, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.
Move approval of budget amendment number five, state funds.
Motion, Mr. McIntyre to approve budget amendment number five.
Second.
Second, Mr. Graves, any discussion? Here none of those in favor, signature of I, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Move approval of budget amendment number six, fund eight.
Fund eight, budget amendment number six, motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve, do we have a second? Second, Ms. Watson, any discussion? Here none of those in favor, signature of I, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Move approval of budget amendment number seven, federal funds.
Motion to approve federal funds, budget amendment number seven, by Mr. McIntyre, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Graves, do we have any questions? Any discussion? Here none of those in favor, signature of I, saying aye.
Aye.
Is that all of us?
No.
You're just taking a break. We should care.
Move approval of budget amendment number eight, local funds.
Local fund, the budget amendment number eight, motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Here none of those in favor, signature of I, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Move approval of budget amendment number nine, fund four, capital outlay.
Capital outlay fund, budget amendment number nine, motion to approve, Mr. McIntyre, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Watson, any discussion? Here none of those in favor, signature of I, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Move approval of budget amendment number ten, federal funds.
Federal funds, budget amendment number ten, motion to approve, Mr. McIntyre, do we have a second? Second, Ms. Watson, any discussion? Here none of those in favor, signature of I, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. At least we know we can count, right? I don't think we have anyone signed up for public comments. Dr. James, superintendent's comments.
All right, thank you, Chairman Poole. Tonight, I do want to say our heart goes out as a board and a superintendent to those in Texas and Ohio. Safety is always at the forefront of any school personnel. I just want to commend this board and the hard work that Todd has done and his team. All of our elementary schools, Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but hopefully by the time the doors open, August twenty-sixth, we'll have a full complement of cameras at each of our elementaries. That's sixteen cameras, and I will tell you that that's pretty well unheard of in the state. Most, most elementaries did not have cameras, if they did, they had one at the entrance, a few cameras scattered throughout the campus, but sixteen cameras, I think the principals will tell you that they'll learn a lot more and maybe have more student discipline since they have cameras everywhere. So that's the unfortunate part with, with having to be able to see everything, you might catch things you weren't catching before. So we have that accomplished. I do want to tell the taxpayers, this board has taken it very diligently, as I, that we were guaranteeing the, guaranteeing the taxpayers in this county that if you would help us get the quarter cent, we would commit to a series of things that we would do. And I'm glad to say that we're halfway down that list. The biggest obstacle we'll have to overcome is the security vestibules. Actually, Mr. Bowers already has plans, they're sitting over in the Zoning and Planning Commission, I actually had a conversation with them, I don't know if they've come out yet. But we also have worked with an architect to get a contractor or contractors lined up to start those security vestibules. So of course, the places that are easiest to do will be done first, so you'll see some construction during the school year of getting those vestibules up. So cameras, vestibules, lobby guard, and actually today, and safety is no longer static, so it's a continual process of what can we do better, as you've seen with the Sheriff's Department doing tabletop exercises. But today, the team met and discussed another remote button that could be used in case you're on the football field and you see possibly an active shooter. It will be on a cell phone, so it'll be accessible through our school network or through cell service. That will give us additional measures to protect our students. Lobby guard has went really well, it's also, as you see, been able to record volunteer hours. There's also a remote lobby guard that we've been discussing. So safety will be a continual discussion among leadership, and we'll try to think ahead on areas that we feel we need to protect. We'll continue the exercises with the Sheriff's Department, and we're working with them diligently. I do know Brian Simpson and our team is trying to meet, to come together on our school system, our camera system, is a uniform camera system that will allow nine-one-one communications. Our hopes are to work with them to get a system set up so they can pull up a camera at any school in case of an event, and they can actually tell the officer in route what building that possibly an intruder's in. The, also, the software we looked at today would actually allow us to upload our site plans and several other things that are accessible through a mobile app. So we're looking at many different ways to make sure campuses are safe. So I did want to know, the public to know that we're probably ahead of schedule, I think. Again, the security vestibules are going to be the biggest setback. It's probably going to take about two years to do that, but we anticipate within the next school year to have a serious dent in what we said we were going to do. Fencing is being put up in about four sites, so that's one thing that was on the list. And once we get this list punched out, I think at the bottom of it was playground equipment and safety on it and fencing around playgrounds, so we'll be working on it. So I'm glad to report to the board, we're about a year ahead of schedule in getting done what we promised we would do to the, or do for the public and with the tax money they entrust us with. So again, I just want to congratulate the board and the leadership in the school system working diligently to make happen what we have promised the public we were going to do. So I do want to say that. I do want to say thank you to the central office staff. And people always ask us, well, what do you do during the summer? And I'm like, oh my gosh, if you think we work during the school year, you ain't seen nothing, baby. Come in during the, during the summer, and we are wide open, some days not knowing which way we're going. But we try to do that to make sure we're prepared. We discuss the strategic plan, the board has approved, to make sure that we're putting things in place to accomplish that strategic plan. As Tim shared tonight, some phenomenal data. And I will tell you that two or three points in graduation rate is a substantial improvement. There's districts that have tried for years to get one point. And if we'd had several more students counted, we'd been over ninety-three percent, which is phenomenal for graduation rate. So I do commend the leadership in putting up with the three days of Leadership Academy Week. I know that there were a lot of glossed-over eyes and some catatonic people, so I hope they heard everything that was presented. We had Dean Shatley come in and do a presentation on some of the updates with general statutes. So again, and as Courtney Swain mentioned tonight, if it was only about the three Rs, it would be a lot less stressful. But here's some staggering statistics. Two of five live births in our country are chemically dependent. So we're having more and more students enter our building with significant needs for mental services that are not there. And all you hear on And all you hear on TV about the shooters and the shootings that have happened is, there was a pattern here. They needed mental health services. And that's something that we're hoping the state's going to pass hopefully sooner than later. We'd like to add additional services there. And we glad to announce that one of our social workers, we didn't create a position, we just consolidated, but, and moved a social worker into a trauma-informed counselor, which is very much needed with the students we have coming in. So again, I commend the, the teachers and the leadership in our buildings and thank all the principals for the great data you had this year. It's a great year and I think they would tell you, we've even got a more solid plan going into next year. I'm actually pretty excited about it. A ton of support and I hope our principals would always tell you that they feel supported and they have the resources they need to get the job done. So thank you Chairman Poole. And board.
Thank you, Dr. James. I'll let you speak your side of the table tonight.
Well, I want to say really my heart goes out to all these people with shooting accidents. We need to really work on that and I hope the students have had a good year, the teachers have had a good year. And thank you Central Office for all that you have done this year. I've been down here and I know they're working. So get ready, we're going to start back to school. Thank you.
Ms. Crump, you want to say anything?
No comment, Melvin.
Okay, okay, thank you, I'm glad you're still with us.
Pardon to hear, I've had to concentrate very hard for that, but I don't have any comments tonight. But I sure do appreciate all the hard work the Central Office has been doing, preparing for the new school year.
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah, just to echo, our thoughts and prayers definitely go out to all those in Texas and Ohio on the tragedies that have recently occurred. Also wanted to thank all of our teachers, administrators, our, our central office staff for all that you've done in the eighteen nineteen school year to help make it a success. And thank you for all that you're doing to help make nineteen and twenty a success. And just to highlight a few, congratulations to Ms. Karen Nixon and Chris Johnson on the success at Indy and South Middle. And as well, a very big congratulations to Ms. Dee at Millimport. I know you're very excited about those results, so thank you all so much for all you do.
Mr. Graves.
Thank you Chairman Poole. I'd like to, I'd like to concur with the other board members who have expressed their gratitude and thanks to everyone in the Central Office and, and all the faculty and staff of Stanley County Schools for all the hard work that you guys do over the summer. You know, I, whenever I come and everyone's working so hard, but I also see Vicki here all the time. So I think she might get an award for, for, for showing up down in the Central Office and keeping everybody working hard. So I, I did have a couple of things I wanted to, to talk about tonight or comment on. First, I wanted to thank superintendent, our superintendent, Dr. Jeff James and Todd Bowers and, and his staff, as well as everyone who's been involved in building out our, our security and school safety systems. So quickly, as Dr. James said, I, I think they were about a half a year ahead of schedule a couple of months ago and now they're, they're probably easily a year ahead of schedule. And, and I'm glad that they didn't wait. They actually, the school system started investing in those systems and technologies even before we got a single dime of that quarter cent sales tax that was passed thankfully and generously by the taxpayers of Stanley County. So it's good to see that we're, we're putting that tax money to use very quickly. So I'm, I'm very excited about that. I also want to thank Courtney Swain for her presentation was excellent. And I also want to thank Ms. Pennington for the program that they have here in the school system. I, I, like our chairman said and our superintendent, it's, it's sad that we, that we live in a day and age where we need those services, but thank God we, we have those resources here in Stanley County and that, that we're working together to be able to provide those resources and services to, to the children of Stanley County Schools. I also wanted to thank our Dixie youth students from South Stanley who went to the Dixie Youth Baseball World Series. Unfortunately, they got knocked out of the series last night, but not after three very exciting games. I think most of them are on their way back now, a fifteen, sixteen hour drive from, I think, I can't remember if it was Alabama or Louisiana, Louisiana. Yeah, so congratulations to them. I don't know if you guys got a chance to watch any of the games, but they were, they were nail biters, very exciting. Three other things I wanted to mention real quick. One was I was, I was a little bit shocked that we didn't have anybody here to present tonight on consolidation from the public. The reason why is that this has become a hot button issue, a hot topic once again. And it's receiving a lot of press and that's good. And I want to thank Stanley News and Press for covering this because the only way we're able to get to any type of resolution on these issues is by having conversations. And sometimes we have to have these conversations every three or four years for the people that have forgotten what's transpired in the past. The only thing I do want to say is that, to the best of my knowledge, I haven't seen a request this year for anyone to present to the board a plan on consolidation. And so with the, with the outcry that, that I'm seeing in the medias, on social media, hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll have some people come and present a consolidation plan to us that we can consider that includes funding for new high schools and, and elementary schools and all that good stuff. So I'm, I'm eager to see that. Second thing I wanted to mention was staggered start. It's, it has been a hot topic on social media. I think it's, it's fascinating that the superintendent and everyone in the Central Office has worked incredibly hard to make sure that we were able to address the, the bus driver shortage that we were facing, not only this last year, but for the upcoming year. And I want to commend them on all the hard, hard work that they've done and Mike Lambert, as well as school efficiency consultants who've, who've worked closely with the school system over the last six months to put this program together. And I just wanted to make sure that I'm correct here because the start time, I believe that our superintendent and, and our school system has gotten the, the earliest pickup to six oh three AM. If, is that correct?
Yes, actually we've run several simulations and you, and you have seen some buses on the roads because they're actually running the routes to make sure. But as I've told the general public, remember every year, regardless of staggered times, when we start school, everyone has to adjust to the traffic patterns. So you can't judge us the first ten days. After that, we'll adjust accordingly, but every route that we have run through the simulator and went out and physically run, yes, we're picking up the exact same time we were last year, six oh three.
That's what I wanted to mention and hopefully this gets picked up by our media. The, the, the earliest pickup starts the exact same time as, as this past year. That was the biggest concern, the single biggest concern expressed by parents of children that were going to be impacted was that they did not want these students to have to be out at the bus stops or out in front of their house earlier. And so I know it took a lot of work, like Dr. James said, a lot of simulations to make it work. But I, I want to thank the school system for doing that. That was a concern for most, if not all of the members of the board, so I'm glad that you guys did that and that we're able to report that out to the families. And I know you will be communicating with parents over the next couple of weeks to make sure everybody's ready for the upcoming school year. So thank you so much for doing that. It's important and, and I'm glad that we're not going to be facing a, a bus driver shortage for this coming school year. And last but not least, one of the issues that we, we have to face or contend with as a school system every year is the issue of discipline. And one of the, one of the challenges when you are dealing with children is adults. And that is that the children look at adults as examples and role models. And so if they see adults breaking the rules and bending the rules, or if they see adults talking about breaking the rules or bending the rules online, then that can have an impact on behavior in the classroom. And the reason why I bring this up is because a policy was passed, I believe it was last September, by the school board. And the policy was forty-one ninety fundraising procedures. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up tonight is that we don't have school board meetings every week. So when, when social media eruptions occur, it's very difficult for the board or anyone in the school system to respond. But this policy, forty-one ninety fundraising procedures, placed some restrictions on teachers when it came to fundraising, specifically about crowdsourcing. And the reason why this was done was because there was a concern across the state that when it came to crowdfunding, that there were a number of issues that could expose the school system to some legal risk. And, and those issues revolved around a lack of integrity with some of the GoFundMe pages that are out there. And it's not just GoFundMe, but any crowd, crowdfunding source, that was just used as, as an example. Accounts being left open and unaccounted for money that was not being filtered through the school secretary so it could be documented, creating issues with documentation, legal issues. So the school system adopted this policy, the school board, I should say, adopted this policy upon the recommendation of the North Carolina School Board Association. Now with all the policies like those that board member Watson read tonight, the many, many policies, they come before the policy committee and then they're brought before the board with a recommendation and then they're tabled for thirty days. And those, those policies go up online. So if you, if you watch the meetings, if you attend the meetings here, you can hear what policies are, are going to be put on the table. And the public has thirty days to take a look at those policies. And then we come back the next month and we'll, we can take public comments. We can, you know, somebody can reach out to the, our chairman, to our superintendent, to ask to speak, to be part of the meeting if they have an issue with any of these board policies. After that thirty days, it comes back. If nobody has any comment, then generally the board accepts a recommendation of the policy committee and those board policies are passed. And then information is shared out within the system. And these policies not only govern the discipline of students, but also faculty and staff. The reason I bring it up is because there was a, a social media eruption over this policy recently because a lot of teachers right now are trying to get ready for the new school year. And apparently we have an issue with funding for school supplies. And, and teachers are still, I believe, I hope this isn't the case, but having to go out and try to raise money or find money themselves or pull money out of their own bank account to make up the difference, which is totally unacceptable. If that's the case, I want the board to, to discuss it before the next board meeting. I'd like at least the superintendent to be able to talk about that at the next school board meeting so we can go to the state because that's unacceptable. But what's also unacceptable is any faculty or staff that is out there saying that it's permissible to break the rules. Because I know that if any student asks if it was okay to break the student code of conduct, a teacher would say no. And if a student is being disruptive in class and a teacher asks them to please follow the rules, the teacher expects them to follow the rules and not come up with some sort of excuse on why they don't think the rule applies to them. So if it's good for the kids, it's good for the adults. And I just wanted to bring that out because it did receive probably about three or four days worth of discussion on Facebook. And I thought I would just address it publicly. And that's it for my comments, thank you very much Chairman Poole.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Just one, before I make any comments, just a housekeeping note here. I have a letter from Ed Dunlap that came to myself and the superintendent on possibility of vacancies on the North Carolina School Board Association, board of directors from your region. We're seeking nominations of these positions. Term of service is two years, members are eligible to serve for two terms. Board meets in November at the State Congress in March, June, September in Raleigh. In addition, each board member typically serves on two committees, they ordinarily meet once or twice a year. And I'm not interested because my, my plate is full. I have the details here if anybody wants to apply for this. Doesn't mean you'll get it, but if you want to apply for it, I have the details here. You got, you got to do some homework on a resume here. I don't want to give people a wrong impression, but I ran for school board for one reason. That was a deal with school issues and surrounding issues that, that govern the school system. I didn't run for school board to tell the county commissioner how to do, commission how to do their job. I didn't run for school board to tell any local city council how to do their job. By the same token, I don't expect them to try to tell us how to do our job. I have a problem with us in, in making an incursion on their turf. Likewise have a problem with them making an incursion on our turf. I'd like to thank the principal, Ms. Emily Shaw from Alamo for very adequately and promptly responding to some comments that were made in the, in the media. Thank you very much and I think you've done an excellent job of presenting the case for Alamo. I don't want to get into a political shoving match and drag the system down into that. Let me say this. We as board members sitting here understand that we're in the political arena. And it's fair for anybody in the public and anybody on elected boards to, to throw rocks at us. That, that's, that's, that's just part of it. What's not acceptable to me is for them to be throwing rocks at the staff in these schools that are working their rear ends off to teach the kids. Either get in the program and contribute positive or keep your flipping mouth shut. Is that clear enough? And I'm, I hate, I even had to get into this, but it burns me up when people start criticizing schools. They don't set foot in the school, they don't see what the teachers are doing, they don't see what the principals are doing, they don't see what the children are doing. All they want to do is criticize. So, you know, if you've got a positive point to make, I'll listen to it. If it's, if you've got a way to get to, from point A to point B, it's never mind, I'll listen to that. And I'll take criticism, but leave the staff alone, it's off limits. It's just like a politician's family ought to be off limits. So, you know, I don't go over and criticize anybody in the, in the, in the county offices for the job they do and I don't go over any of the cities, city and towns around the county. I don't go in and criticize their staff and, and, and members. But, you know, that said, I, I hope the message hits out. You know, either get on board and help the school board do its job or, or get out of the way. We've got things to do, we've had a good, successful year and it's been a good, successful year at Alamo. And I think Ms. Shaw made the, the clear case to the city council all night that Alamo is alive and well and kicking. Okay, enough of that. We are getting ready to kick off a new school year and I, I didn't want to start it off on a negative note, but I'm, I'm trying to do this in a positive way. You know, let's do something together that's good. I thought a while back when we had a joint meeting with, with council that we, we might get some cooperation. I didn't expect to get blasted against the wall, but so be it. Just leave the staff alone and, and either get it, get with the program. I'd like to thank everybody for your hard work over the summer. Mr. Bowers, I know you've been jumping through the hoops, but not only with the, with the maintenance, with transportation stuff too, so appreciate what you've done. I, I want to mention very quickly staggered busing. And I think most people have, that I've talked to, that are upset after some conversation, they come, they calm down and understand it was a sane decision we had to make. No, no member on this board relished having to do that. I, I can tell you that. But I, I, I feel confident in the ability of the members on this board to think through things and reason things out in a very pragmatic and practical way. And I appreciate the board for doing what you had to do. With that, our September meeting will be Tuesday, the third, in the Commons Room. And at that meeting, we will have to decide about what we're going to do about October's meeting because we may have to adjust the date we hold October's meeting due to the superintendent being out of town. So we'll, we'll deal with that at the September meeting. Tuesday, September the third, here in the Commons at seven o'clock. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session on the Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, three eighteen. The Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, point one one, A six. Our Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, point one one, A one. Attorney-client Matters, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen. Correction, one forty-three, three eighteen, point one, one A three. Motion by Mr., motion by Ms. Watson to go into closed session. Second by Mr. McIntyre. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, signal of saying aye. Opposed, no. Take a five-minute break in room.